All right. Good evening, everyone. It is Thursday, March 21st. The Select Board meeting I call to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements? The Brookfield Equimetal Food Pantry at St. Mary's is seeking donations of condiments, paper products, liquid hand soap, shampoo, and laundry detergent. Items may be dropped off Wednesday and Saturdays from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. at the food pantry at St. Mary's Church at the corner of Lincoln and Howard Streets. And once again, I'd like to remind everyone that the correct spelling of my name is Regan. R-E-G-A-N. All right. Brad, could you do the warrants, please?
Sure. Signed warrants, FY 24-18 payroll, $194,493.37. FY 24-18 withholding, $67,095.99. FY 24-18 accounts payable, $854,163.56.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ms. Coughlin sent us a note saying that she was going to be late, and it's a fairly full agenda, so she'll catch up when we get here. And given that she was lead on the Sun Fusions HCA, Brad, I'll take a motion to take the agenda out of order.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. I'll second that. And all in favor of taking the agenda out of order, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. All right. So, let's see. So, security camera, sir.
So what you want to do? I chopped it up a different way to get other people out of here.
Oh, okay. I'll take a suggestion. Okay. What do you got?
Garden Club.
Garden Club.
Get them out first.
All right. Then we'll do the garden club. Dennis, you're here for the garden club?
Yes.
All right. So why don't you come up here? We can get you out of here.
All right. Thank you. So as I'm sure many of you know, the Brookfield Garden Club maintains the perennial garden on the triangle at the common. And I'm here to request permission that we'd like to put signs on each side of the triangle stating that it's maintained by the Brookfield Garden Club. And we're hoping to maybe increase membership and get some recognition as to that we do that, maintain it. And I'm here to ask for permission to put those signs. And we haven't designed the signs yet because I was waiting to see if it was okay.
Okay. I'm fine with that in principle. It's just, just how big are the, how big do you think the signs to be?
You have to then comply with the zoning bylaws.
Yeah, we were thinking of a small, like less than two foot by two foot and not more than like two feet off the ground on each side of the triangle.
So three sides of the triangle?
Yeah.
Okay.
Each side, sign that says maintained by Brookfield Garden Club, but small signs, not very high off the ground.
Yeah, similar where 131, in Surbitur, 131 and 20 intersect. If you're coming up 131, I've seen signs in that island area to the left, similar to that?
Yeah, probably. I haven't seen those, but yeah, it's just, it's just small signs.
Yeah, it's smaller than a typical campaign sign. It's going to be lower to the ground.
Yeah, it'd be discreet just to let people know that we maintain it.
Okay. I was gonna say, it's like...
We can just give him the permission, then he's got to comply with...
He needs a motion. He has to comply with zoning regardless of...
Right, right. And probably historic, I don't know, because it's on the common.
It would be advisable to check with the historical commission because the retaining and historical aspect of that area is very important.
Yes.
So if you check with them about the signage prior to finalizing the design.
Okay.
That would bring in all...
Yeah, sounds good.
And then if you, and when you have the design finalized, if you could send it to us. And then that way, we can say, yeah, that's consistent with what we thought. And if not, we can let you know we have some concerns and we can discuss those before you send them to print.
Sounds good.
All right. So, other than that, I will take a motion.
Make a motion for, to allow the garden club to put up signs at the triangle.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Mr. Regan, I raise a point of order.
You, briefly, Mr. Keller.
At the beginning of the meeting, you didn't ask who was recording the meeting. I'd just like to go off your sound and say, I don't know.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Keller, thank you for that reminder. I will, I, let's see. I will note that the meeting is being recorded by the town. And if anyone else is recording the meeting, would you please identify yourself?
Brookfield Camera is recording the meeting.
Okay. All right. I have two people. There we go. Anyone else? No. All right. Thank you. Karen, can, can we make sure that gets in the announcements? It's like, I just, I just go with what's in front of me. It's not a habit yet. All right, Brad.
These are all just suggestions. Well, I was gonna say Don Taft next, but he's not here, so.
No, yeah, he won't be here in for a while. It's like, and then for, yeah, for that.
Or do we want to do, well, Dave Fromm's gonna be here.
Let's see. Why don't we handle the COA resignation?
Yeah, sure.
Let's, let's just do administrative stuff until Beth gets here.
Yep.
All right. So Barbara Clancy has resigned. That's unfortunate. And she was the, yeah, she was on the COA. She wasn't the administrator, was she?
No.
I can't.
She was the chair.
She was the chair. All right. Then I think we will accept her resignation with regret and...
I'm sorry. She was the co-chair. Thank you. She was the chair for many years and then became co-chair when...
Okay. All right. So we'll take the, so take a motion to accept her resignation with regret?
Motion with regret. I don't think we need to make a motion.
Okay.
But...
No, you don't accept resignations. They can quit even if you don't. You're acknowledging them.
Okay. To acknowledge your resignation with regret. And that's the word I was looking for. All right. I will, you made the motion?
Yes.
Then I will second it. All in favor of acknowledging it with regret, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Garden, wait. I checked out number 13, and I meant to check out number nine. And so... Let's see. Acknowledge Fire Department reports? I think that's nice and quick and easy. They're keeping busy. They do seem to roll a lot to assist the EMS crew. Brad, can you give us a motion?
Motion to acknowledge the Fire Department reports for the January and February 2024.
All right. I will second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Safe Select Board minutes for later. And then, done, done. And I don't know if there's anything else we want to get started on without...
You can appoint your...
Yes. I was gonna say. All right.
Do you want me to just make a motion?
Well, why don't I, item, agenda item number nine, the Conservation Commission appointment of Sarah Campbell. It's, let's see.
So, make a motion to appoint Sarah Campbell to the Conservation Commission?
All right. I will second that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Keller, does this bring you up to full step, fully equipped on your, on the Conservation Commission? Or do you still have vacancies?
Unfortunately, we are still one member short, Mr. Regan.
All right. Thank you. I'm, let's see. I think the Town Administrator Search Committee, you want to try and do that one first?
Sure.
Yeah. We can, all right. So the, the members for the Town Administrator Committee appointments, Jeffrey Clark, Charles Blanchard, Mary Lou Knight, Mike Siri, Lori Varkus, with Peter Martel as an alternate, and Bruce Clark as an alternate.
So moved.
All right. I will second that. All in favor of the, of appointing, and one second. Kelly, do we have a charge for them as a committee?
Yes, we do. Like it was, it's the same charge as before.
Okay. We've already, we've already voted a charge, Karen?
We already voted it, and I changed it. The only change was that it was five and two alternates as opposed to seven. But it's the same charge. They're gonna recommend two to three candidates to the board.
Okay.
And where, where do we stand on the applications? We have a bunch of applications.
I think it was 16.
So I mean, I don't know if we want to wait for Beth or what your opinion is. I mean, can we just cut the time?
Wait for what?
I mean, can the Select Board just, if there's a bunch of applications and...
No, you just appoint the Search Committee. The Search Committee, the Search Committee.
We'll do that.
We do the applications, and that's the, those are the ones we're going to use.
We're good.
Okay. All right. So...
So my motion still stands?
Yes. I just want, I just want to make sure we weren't appointing to a committee that had not been charged.
No.
All right. So the motion is...
Yeah.
That, that makes sense. And so the motion is to appoint the people listed to the committee as described. All in favor of appointing the people to the Town Administrator Search Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Lots of...
Do we want to just go over the cameras?
Hold on a second. Someone's coming in, and it's about time. See in the window for Beth to arrive. Or is that the furnace guy? What's that, Karen?
Oh, the, the, that's a discussion, that's a discussion for the whole board. There's something on the...
That's Tassie. Milling about?
The heat upstairs, there's an issue with the heat upstairs. And so we're waiting for the, Tassie was on their way.
We can't do the cable studio equipment because that was sent out to bid for the equipment.
Yes.
And the performance was followed, and this is as well as the funding is available.
Yes. I tried to look at this last night, and my computer would not show the PDF. So I couldn't read.
Oh, Robert.
Yes. I couldn't, I couldn't read that. And it's like, and then today was a busy workday. So... All right. So we, we will move on to the cables, agenda item number three, cable studio equipment. And this is a quote to bring the, to bring it up to snuff?
Yes.
Paid for out of the cable peg funds or?
Yes.
All right. And now that I can read it. And software licenses. Hey, Jacob?
Yeah.
I have some questions on this. Could you come up?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
My, my question is, some of this appears to be equipment, and some of this appears to be licenses and services. And so the, the total is $37,000 and a little bit more, under $37,100. And then, do you have an idea of how much of this is one-off versus how much of this is recurring?
I haven't looked at it recently, and I don't have it in front of me. I don't know if you could, I can smart copy.
Thank you.
Okay, yes. So it's yeah, around $8,000, pretty close to $8,000.
Is, is recurring in the sense that it's like, you pay for credits,
and then as the credits get spent down, we then refill them. Those are for things like live captioning, as well as video on demand. So broadcasting to the website, broadcasting to YouTube, broadcasting to Facebook. But if we don't use them, they don't expire. So it's really, we're gonna have to figure it out, once we start broadcasting to those channels, what that sort of replenishment rate is gonna look like.
Okay. So it's, it's, it's basically, it's an initial stake of expendable supplies for, for free. Not exactly accurate, but catches the gist.
Exactly. Right. And they based it on towns of similar size, once they went to video on demand and captioning, what those kind of costs look like.
Yeah. Was the intention to give us, take us with about a year's worth of, about how long, I guess? I'd rather put terms in your mouth.
Yeah, yeah. So that's exactly right. So the estimate was about a year. But I actually think that it's a little over zealous. So, because we only are really filming one, one meeting every couple of weeks, because it's just this meeting. But if we were to expand and hold more meetings here, film more, then that would give us about a year's worth.
Okay. So it's, it's, it's one year at a higher burn rate than what we're executing now. But the thought is, with new equipment, we may find it easier and have an appetite to film more.
Right. And my understanding is, we're looking at putting some sort of a video recording equipment in this, in this room to kind of film more meetings, so that would allow us to be able to do that if we wanted to.
Yeah, that is one of the things being discussed.
Okay.
All right. And then, and then is this just a, and so this is go, this is new equipment to allow us to do video processing, video editing?
Correct. So it'll...
And also?
Yeah. So it'll automate a lot of the editing, captioning, and sort of piecing everything together and putting it out, broadcasting it.
Okay.
In a much more streamlined way than the current system does.
Yeah. Fewer volun, fewer hours by people working. And so, and given that we have plenty of money in the peg fund and not a surplus of volunteers to do the work, it does make sense to make it easier so that the volunteers we have or the paid, the staff we have can do more in that amount of time.
Sure.
Okay. Brad, do you have any questions? Or Beth? We're on agenda item number three, the...
Yep. Yeah, I picked up on that.
I got a couple of questions that I can ask later.
No, you can, you start with your questions.
No, they're...
It'll be time to catch up, if you want.
Cable studio in the school. I mean, we can, I can talk to them about this after.
Yeah, you can talk to them about that after. I think at some point, we can probably clear a lot of that out.
Right.
Depending on what we're doing.
And then...
And inventory of things that are no longer needed.
Yeah, I saw that email. I'll start going through that.
And then, I know it was something I talked about, but I don't know if we officially talked about it or not. What about the thought or idea of having like a TV setup in here? So like if we're going through things, it displays for the audience?
Oh, like...
That's not part of this.
Right. No, I know. That's why I'll talk about that later.
Right. So this is upgrading the equipment that aged out a year before you bought.
Yep.
Right, yeah. I do have, I mean, I do have plans for all of that, but yeah.
Yeah. And yeah, we can, that's actually something we should talk about relative to annual town meeting as well. We talked about if we wanted to do annual town meeting upstairs. If we can't get a lift in, or if we don't get an elevator and...
That's part of a separate grant.
Yeah, we have the grant. We're going out to bid. It was posted today.
Oh, really?
Is it? Yes.
And where will this equipment be located? At the studio at the elementary school?
Correct.
Okay. That's, was my guess.
Yeah, in that server rack that's, that's there.
Okay. I don't think, I think I've been in it once, and it was just briefly.
Yeah, yeah.
It was after town meeting last year.
Yeah, it's, it's a nice space. We can keep using it.
All right. I'm good. Beth?
Actually, this is something that's long overdue, so I'm glad we've got at least a known man in front of us.
Okay. All right. And I'll take a motion.
And this can, so I'll make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all in favor of signing the, approving and signing the contract with Telview, please say aye.
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 Thank the board for their time.
All right. Thank you, Jacob. And let's see, we sign this? Pass that down to Karen. All right. Thank you. And Beth and...
Do we want to get this, Mr. Keller, out next?
Ah, let's see. Well, I think, I think Mr. Mr. Fromm's been waiting, and so...
Yeah, let's, let's...
We'll ju, we'll jump back to it when Beth's here.
Okay.
All right. So agenda item, agenda item number one, Sun Fusions Host Community Agreement. Mr. Fromm, would you care to join us? And Beth, you've been lead on this, so I'm gonna follow you.
Well, I have been lead on this, except when I tried to contact KP this morning in order to get a copy of where we were at, inclusive of some optional clauses. I was told you had been in contact with KP, and they didn't send me anything.
I have talked to Michelle at KP. I did not talk at, about the HCA at all. If I did, it came up very tangentially. My, the substance of my discussion was a different matter.
So when I contacted, so I, I only contacted via email, and I explicitly asked for the agreement in writing in its current, like whatever the level of alignment was between the town and, what is Mr. Fromm's attorney's name?
Kyle Soski.
Kyle Soski.
Soski.
Soski, yeah. I apologize.
No worries.
My brain is actually full on names, so cycling them in.
That is frighteningly close to Kaiser Sose.
Oh, now I remember. That's really funny. So, so I, I asked for the current state of the document, and basically they didn't give it to me, which, and since they somewhat cited you as the reason why they weren't giving it to me, I just basically figured I'd wait and talk to you at the meeting.
Yeah. Probably some curses at my general direction in your head also, for mucking with your things.
So the good news is, is I tend to use, I start to draw on my rather voluminous vocabulary in lieu of profanity. So if I use a lot of million dollar words during this conversation, you will understand what happened. So...
I believe that Attorney Soski has a copy.
He does have a copy. Does he have a copy?
Yeah. So, and, and you know, I, I didn't know about that interaction between the board and, and town council, so I can kind of explain what version I have with me.
That would be great. Thank you.
So, you know, originally KP Law had sent me their, their template. I sent them back my redlined edits, and then I had a phone call with Nicole Costanzo, I guess, last week, and we went through my, my revisions line by line. You know, and she said what, what the town would agree to, but they wouldn't. And then I, I sent her another redline incorporating most, but not all of what she wanted changed back or changed. And, you know, and said, you know, we were agreeing to some, to some of what the town wanted, but, but there were some things that were still in contention that were reflected in the new redline. And I sent that on Monday. And so I hadn't heard anything since then, so I didn't know what had happened with it. I had assumed that you had received it.
Yeah, and I apologize. I was out of town for a few days because it was a family business.
Right. And I, I'm not saying that to cast any blame.
Oh, no, it's okay.
But it, just, just to, I guess to make the point that you, you might not have seen the document that I have with me.
Correct. That's probably the case.
But I didn't realize that. But, but I do have copies.
Oh, good. I was gonna say, you know, to Karen.
And I, I do have, I do have a couple of copies of the that reflects the, kind of the most recent changes. It didn't come out great on my printer. It starts with red lines. There's three copies. So this is the, this is what we had hoped would be the final document. There's trying to see how much can be seen in this. So you're welcome to look at, these, these are that should reflect, I mean, I know it's not easy to see because it's in black and white, so you can't see the, the red lines. But that should reflect the changes between KP Law's original template and our proposed final draft. And I apologize. I realize I only have two of those. I'm sorry.
All right. So, so the...
You can have this one.
So, so the marked up version reflects the, basically incorporates all the discussions that you and town council have had on the, on this matter? Or most of it?
Yes. So the, the marked up versions on, on that really reflect, most importantly, they reflect changes that town council said the town was not necessarily agreeing to.
Okay.
And, and I guess the, the point of that being that that wasn't something that the attorneys could resolve. So, you know, that's something that the town could either agree to or not, in seeing what it is. But it couldn't be resolved just between myself and Nicole.
Okay. So, we need to...
Well, so fundamentally, Ken, let's just be straightforward about this. What, what, where are the differences right now? I think, because the last documentation I saw, we had three fundamental differences. And I think two of them, we had a space that we could move into that was somewhere between where our language was. Where are we at with, with this copy right now?
Can you, can you describe which, which three you're referring to? There were a number of edits somewhere...
I should have brought my notes. There was one relative to indemnification that I know that we had to find some common language on.
Yes.
There was some questions around the good neighbor policy and what the expectations were relative to that. And there was one relative to putting a time certain on what flavor of local regulations and, and bylaws that this agreement pertains to.
Yes. So I'd have to address this.
Those were the three, those were the three areas that I remember that we still needed to find some common language on.
Right. So if I could address first the good neighbor policy, what town council said to me was that, that really shouldn't have been capitalized in the template, that it wasn't referring to a specific policy.
Okay.
But was really referring to more, simply that Sun Fusions was agreeing to be a, you know, desired to be a good corporate citizen and a good neighbor.
Right.
Which is agreeable.
To not like arbitrarily act in a way that was counterintuitive to what you'd expect from somebody that is living next to you.
Right, right. But, but my understanding that there was no actual written policy. So, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. We don't, I know we don't currently have anything like that.
And, and then to address the indemnification. So, you know, I would first point out that there's no requirement that this, that a host community agreement have an indemnification provision. Other, other towns and cities do not. I know that, for instance, North Hampton, which has many cannabis establishments, does not have an indemnification provision in theirs, regardless. The issue that I took with KP Law's provision was that the my position is that it was too, too broadly related to the property and the business, such that there wasn't a clear relationship to the business, business's acts or omissions being the
The cause.
Being the cause of a claim that the town would be on the hook for.
Okay.
So I think in, in principle, Sun Fusions is agreeable to an indemnification provision.
And is your language that, because I don't have the changes piece, where you put gross negligence or misconduct?
Well, and, and before then, so arising from or relating to the company's breach of this agreement, the company's gross negligence or misconduct, or the company's failure to comply with applicable laws or regulations and the permissive obligations under this agreement.
So basically, if we, if you violated the intent of this agreement or just choose to willfully act in a manner that's counterintuitive to both want good sense, then you'd be on the hook to help us with our legal fees relative to an action against the town for failing to control you all.
Yes. I mean, my, right. My intent was that there be a, a relationship between an act or omission of the company and the claim, and not have it be so broad that simply...
If someone took offense because we had cannabis in town and, and then went after the town in spite of 57% of us saying that we wanted cannabis in our town, then
That's exact, yeah. That's exactly the example I was thinking of. If someone sued the town saying that the, you know, the vote in favor of, of the legalization state measure was, was fraudulent or something. That I, I think the way KP Law drafted the original provision, that could put Sun Fusions on the hook for that lawsuit. And I, that seemed to me to be overly broad.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's reasonable. I mean, and I don't... Yeah, I mean, that's reasonable. I think that's reasonable. I mean, and I don't see any particular issue with the verbiage as it stands. And at least, basically, you know, it's, I hate to put it this way, the indemnification clause is basically the teeth of the good neighbor policy. It's the, follow the agreement and don't be that person or entity and you won't have to worry about helping us defend ourselves from the populace over the fact that you haven't conducted yourself in a manner that's appropriate. So, okay.
Too documented.
Yes, so the, as you referred to, the time certain in regards to the bylaws and regulations that would be deemed applicable to this agreement. So, I did put in language in a few places, which I will point out, basically stating that, that the understanding of the parties for this agreement was that the bylaws and the regulations that it's referring to are those that were in effect as of February 1st, 2024. And I chose that date because that was the date that, that the board agreed to enter into these negotiations. I mean, if you want to change that, I think that could be done.
That sounds like a very reasonable date.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's when we started actively working it fundamentally.
Right. And, and so the, the intent behind putting this date into the provisions that refer to the regulations and the bylaws was so that essentially everyone, there'd be a clear understanding of what sort of rules were in effect for this agreement. And what that, you know, what rules Sunfusions would be, would be obliged to, to follow, to uphold.
To comply with, to comply with.
To comply with, yes. And so that, that for instance, sort of the rug couldn't be pulled out from under the business after significant, you know, investment had been made and, and the business was, was up and running and then,
Especially where two thirds of our town meeting agreed that we have a perfectly reasonable marijuana zoning bylaw that is perfect because no one's happy with it, right?
Right.
It's the ultimate compromise. Nobody actually likes the damn thing, but, so that means it must be actually,
Yeah, exactly.
Different what it's supposed to do.
So, and so I'd be glad to point out where those, those dates are.
That'd be great.
So.
Number seven. I just definitely am at page.
Yes, there's section number seven on page five titled Local Permitting.
Yep, okay.
Right, so obviously the company will have to obtain a special permit from the planning board and whatever other local approvals may be required. Section, I guess it's 11K on page nine entitled Waste and Wastewater Controls.
Yep, and actually that's good because the phrasing makes the local bylaws to the fore part of that paragraph calls out the state and federal regulations, but if those change, you know that we have no control over that, nor do you, and everyone just needs to comply with it.
No, exactly. And this, there was no,
The way that's phrased works.
There was no intent to sort of freeze state or federal law to the extent it applies to the business. The next, the following section L, Odor Control Technology, and the date is on the following page, page 10.
Okay, great.
And?
And I actually like where, and I like where we landed actually relative to the odor as well overall. I think that, I think that's a decent.
Oh, yes, and so I feel like I should address something that, a change that was made in there, just that it's not, because I'm not sure exactly what you, what you saw and what you didn't.
What I saw, what I didn't.
So, the way the, the original template read, I had concerns about the sort of,
There was a proscriptive, there was a proscriptive nature relative to the technology to be used, I know.
Well, there was that, but it, but more, my concern was more so in the unfettered discretion it gave the town to impose any mitigation measures it, it chose to do so upon the company without any, it put no basis in science or law or regulation or due process. And I found that a little bit concerning. Because what if, you know, if it's an easy fix and it fixes a valid problem, I'm sure that Sunfusions would be glad to do it. But what if, you know, what if it was a $5 million solution and the town was to say, well, you have to do it or you shut down, right? And that could be problematic. So what I, so the way I changed it was to say that there would have to be a public hearing and that there would have to be a recommendation of an independent expert
Yeah.
prior to the town mandating such a requirement.
So, and I do have a question though, and I know we don't have a broad list of definitions at the beginning of this document, which is always a challenge, right? So, but I think, because I, I don't know if you all raised independent expert first or if I made that recommendation as well to KP. But one of, one of the things I was interested in seeing was that the independent expert was, was defining how that independent expert would be, like selected between the two parties. Fundamentally, because that can get, is it your expert, is it your expert? That's, that's, that's the only, that's the only thing. I agree, independent expert. In my perfect world, we would have a little bit of verbiage wrapped around the independent expert. So, you know, it can be selected by one party, but it requires the agreement of both parties for the selection of an independent expert. Can we just, can we come up with some fairly generic language to that effect?
Right, I mean, that, I mean, that seems very, very reasonable. I mean, if, if, you know, I mean, I guess there's the, I don't know how, you know, agreements could go.
If you need an expert witness that has certain credentials, and I don't know how you do that for this.
Yeah, I don't know how, I don't know how you do that for this, but I think that,
I mean, it's going to depend on what it,
An expert to be agreed by the parties, such agreement not to be unreasonably withheld.
Yes, something like that would be fine. I think that, I think that verbiage is, is fine. But you understand where I'm going with that, I mean.
Yeah, it's perfectly reasonable.
If you all agree to the changes in the current format that it is in this particular, you can have the option, see, to vote to approve it as discussed amended and authorize the signature without having to come back to another meeting.
That's what I was going to recommend, actually. So, because it's almost as simple and straightforward and clearly defined changes. I think we can do that. So.
I mean, I've got a couple of thoughts here. For the, for the odor control, the, the permit, or the HCA, from what I read, invigins outdoor cultivation, correct?
No.
Or both? Did I miss that?
It was greenhouse.
Well, so it's, 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 it's an outdoor license as entitled by the CCC, but the, that has to do with the use of artificial lights, how the CCC deems it. But Sunfusions plan so that they will be enclosed in greenhouses. But they, but they won't be using artificial lights for the majority of the growing, so therefore the CCC is going to deem it outdoor.
Okay, so it's going to be,
It'll be enclosed.
It will be enclosed in greenhouses without artificial light, is what I heard you say.
Or minimal, minimal artificial.
Minimal?
Okay.
Okay, that's, and that's, I just want to understand what's being negotiated.
For the purposes of odor mitigation, it will, it will be enclosed in a greenhouse.
Hmm, okay.
Yes.
All right, so that, that brings odor control there now. I know, and now, and now we see water, but this is, this is in, this is off of Melasses Hill Road, at the north end of Melasses Hill Road, and there is no town water there.
Correct. They're going to be, they're going to be operating off of well.
Mm-hmm.
And that was actually one of the areas where we, we had to go back and forth some because the original text provided by KP included hand watering and the intent is to actually, in speaking with, with them, the intent is to use a drip system. A drip system is probably one of the most water efficient means to do any type of agriculture. So the way we put it in here was to, that if any watering method was to be used, and basically it, that the,
Because they don't want to waste water.
Water consumption techniques shall include drip irrigation and a commitment not to engage in water intensive cultivation methods. And the reason why I asked for that is because I'm aware of residents south of the river whose wells go very, very dry during dry seasons. Even Nanataqua had to sink some additional wells a couple of years back because they were starting to run dry.
And they're right next to the river.
And they're right next to the river, right?
Probably pretty full now.
They're probably pretty full now, but, but, you know, it's a cyclic thing and I, you know, I, and I, you know, I just know that there's people that struggle with that. So that was one of the things I asked. And drip irrigation, it's in here explicitly. It makes sense both from their perspective and from the town's perspective because it's, it's water conscious. And then if something should change and that wasn't the method being employed, then they'd have to basically communicate it to us and make sure that doesn't put the neighbors in a, in a bad way.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, that's my, yeah, that's, I just want to make sure that we weren't putting someone in there who was going to suck up a whole bunch of water and,
Right.
use, I mean, it's like, granted, I suspect most of the water they use is either going to be absorbed by the plants and eventually go back, or,
Yeah.
it's going to go back into the ground, so.
Right, exactly.
And I don't, I don't know what the, I don't know what the water,
And you're talking, and you're talking a drip system in a closed building like a greenhouse, which is going to keep high humidity anyway, which is going to lower your water consumption, you know, and it's, it's got its own water cycle there.
And what is, what is the, what is the water requirement of the Invision manufacturing operation? And, and actually Kelly, before I get too far into the weeds, is this, is water something that,
This is only about the agriculture. This is only about the agricultural agreement. This has nothing to do about those that are present.
Okay, okay, so the manufacturing and the retail are not part of today's discussion?
Right.
Got it? All right, that makes,
We are only talking about the agricultural agreement.
Okay.
While we're on the topic, I, I did take the liberty of drafting basically the, an identical version of the HCA for the manufacturing license. I realized that that probably wasn't contemplated by the, the board for tonight, but just in case, that you felt that this covered it. I do have that document with me. I have copies of it.
Okay, well, let's, let's finish this off and then we can use this.
Yeah, but the only thing that's on the agenda that we can speak to, we could take your copy and review it and,
Right, but we can vote on it.
beat out at the next meeting, but we can't vote on it tonight. So.
And then the other thing is, and I don't, the, the freezing of regulation. So, that may, that, basically that means that if, that, that means that the town, any changes to the bylaws or town regulations that happen, if I, do I understand correctly that they would be immunized from them or indemnified? Or, I don't know what the right term is, but they would be grandfathered under, so that the changes don't affect them?
I don't know that it's so much that it doesn't affect them, but they don't have a binding agreement with us to follow them if they would be radical.
They wouldn't be in violation of the HCA.
They wouldn't be in violation of this if they chose not to follow a future regulation that's strictly a municipal regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Actually looked through other towns' HCAs and what, actually, I haven't found any with a date. Usually it references the bylaw versions and stuff like that.
Yeah, so I mean,
Which is effectively doing the same thing.
Which is effectively doing the same thing, right? So I mean, if we wanted to change the date certain to whatever our current date is of our town bylaws, then that would, you know, that would fall into the same category. I think the reason why they're using a date certain is because a lot of, unlike towns that are mature enough to have revision controlled regulations, I doubt that we have, you know, I doubt we have a full set of, if we had any town specific conservation commission rules or regulations, I doubt that we have one that shows exactly what date it was effective fundamentally. So this, using a date certain for the state of the regulations basically says it doesn't matter whether it's the bylaws we voted in last year or something that 20 years ago became the standard practice with, you know, that's what's there. So.
Okay, because what I'm, what I'm trying to re,
And, and so, and so here's the thing, right? If we had, y'all were ready to just sign a waiver six weeks ago. This is sure with none of the controls that are in this document. So.
I wasn't ready to sign a waiver.
Y'all sounded like you were ready to sign a waiver. So.
Okay, well, then, then I didn't clearly convey my,
Your feelings at the time?
Yes.
Okay. So, my feeling is that this basically puts a lot of left, right limits in place about what the expectations are between the two entities, okay? But it provides a framework of what is everyone agreeing to so that it's not a moving target.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
Because movement targets are awfully hard to hit. You can, you know, I'm fairly skilled at it, but, you know.
I'm just, I'm just turning up my hands, because I know, specifically, I think of the, the Board of Health, and I know they are working on regulations. And so, it's just, and since those are a known issue, it's like, are we signing an agreement that effectively precludes their authority?
Yes, you are.
Yes and no, right? So, you know, it's yes and no. And the reason why I say yes and no is that there's a lot of, there is a lot of challenge relative to local control for Board of Health, right? But what we're saying is our intent as the executive board of this town is that this agreement is in accordance with the regulations today.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Now, we are, one, we're a weak board, right? And number two, Board of Health is kind of its own beast in the state of Massachusetts. It's just like the Board of Ed, or the school board is its own beast in the state of Massachusetts, okay?
It's co-equal with its own domain.
This agreement is between us and Sunfusions. They go rogue on us. The Board of Health goes rogue on the executive board's intent, which is, we have our regulations, we have our bylaws. The town collectively has agreed on what we have in place today relative to our rules and our bylaws, right? Quite frankly, some of the regulations that the Board of Health was working on was such that their meeting got shut down, had to get moved over to another space and turned into quite the goat rodeo, from what I understand, relative to that.
There was some vigorous debate at that, a vigorous discussion.
So, goat rodeo. Okay, so, I can't negotiate something or the behavior of a board that we have no purview over and functionally no mechanisms about. But what we can talk about is what our intent is as the town of Brookfield, as the town of Brookfield's executive board, and what we're planning on having as a relationship and alignment with this entity that wants to be partners with us and actually be a good business partner. I will tell you, when I've asked people about some of the regulations, some of the activities of the Board of Health, I got earful from people like farmers, like regular farmers, right? People that, like, all they want to do is sell a little something at the farmer's market and they're having to pay, you know, $500 a year for the agent to come in and, and, or no, $350 a year to test their water, right? Even though what they sell is baked goods at the farmer's market, okay? What does the, what's in the water matter for baked goods, so long as you're following proper practices? You're never, your water's never going to touch your product unless it's going in for 350 for 45 minutes, okay? So, we already have a challenge in this town, right? That sometimes we're focusing on stuff that makes it really, 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 really hard to do business.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, this is our opportunity to say that us as a Board of Selectmen, we're not going to let you off the hook. There's a lot of left, right limits in here. you off the hook, there's a lot of left, right limits in here based on what we have in place today, which is considered sufficient. We've got state law, right? We've got a lot of state law around cannabis. We've got my, like I said, everybody's least favorite marijuana bylaw, cause nobody likes it, right? We've got all of the licensing requirements, all of the permitting requirements, all of the stuff that people have to go through in order to get cannabis facilities established. Let's at least show that our intent is that, that the business conditions that they're operating under today is what this executive board considers what the standard should be that the enterprise is helping. If Dave wants to put me up on the side, cause he says I'm in cahoots with the cannabis people, he can, he can swap your name out tonight when he leaves out of here, okay? So, but, to me, it makes sense because what we're negotiating is based off of the state of the business today, state of the laws today.
And, and, and I understand, I understand that we, to a large extent, have to say, it's like, okay, this is what we have now.
Yep.
And then my, the challenge I'm having is that, I mean, I, I, I heard Mr. Fromm from the side saying that this, that he, in his opinion, he felt that this agreement would isolate him from changes to, um, bylaws, future, future bylaw changes.
But all pre-existing things are isolated.
Right.
It's called grandfathering, that's the old terminology. Pre-existing non-conforming is a protection and that's how it works.
It's a very standard one.
In my own personal opinion is the CCC has enough oversight.
Yeah, it's, it's so much oversight. So, so much oversight.
And if I, if I can just add on, and, um, and Beth, I think you, you made this point, but, um, the intent is not to, um, you know, eviscerate the Board of Health, but rather to make it so that, for instance, the Board of Health could not effectively nullify an agreement that the select board entered into and wished to be effective. Um, and, and I think that with, without this provision, it would be possible for the Board of Health to enact a regulation that essentially terminated the-
They could actually enact a regulation that functionally eviscerates both our town meeting and, um, the vote that people took at the polls to say that they think cannabis should be legal in the state of Massachusetts.
But then they'll have us to deal with and you won't. Cause if you put a date in, then I can't be said to be in violation of my HCA and KP doesn't need to take anyone else's part. Whereas if I agree to any silly thing that comes along the pike two months from now, two years from now, not only have I invested a lot of money in something that's now gonna be disrupted, but I can fairly be said to be in violation of my HCA because I would be agreeing to things unknown in the future. That's foolish, no one would do that. This is a contract, not a license.
Okay. So, so should I be understanding this that, that for the, that conformance to the requirements of the HCA are predicated on conformance to the bylaws as they are today?
Absolutely.
If bylaws change, then non-conform, then-
Pre-existing non-conforming is?
If, if you, then the, if the bylaws change and you were not conforming to them, that would not constitute a violation of the HCA, that might be its own issue to not violate. It's like, other people might be upset, but in the context of the HCA, you'd be good in the HCA because you are conforming to what was, what the HCA envisioned.
Basically, can I put it this way? If you decide to ban cannabis two years from now, I'll simply find a new place to go when my agreement runs out with you.
No, I, I understand.
But you won't be able to shut me down, you can prevent others from coming.
Mm-hmm.
I'm grandfathering because we have a contract.
Because the, the, it's like, if that, if that changes, the, that will not void the HCA. And, 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 and I'm good with that. My thought is, it's like, I want, I, I agree that the HCA is there, it's just, I don't want an executive action of the select board to, um, to potentially have the, it's like, I want to be cognizant of the other elected boards in town, they have their own area and I wanna make sure that we're not going in there. And so, so Kelly, is it-
They've had a year plus to enact whatever regulations that they intended to relative to this topic.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't want them coming at us, I'd rather them go to the CCC and start a complaint there.
Right, exactly. So, if, if we have a board in town that hasn't enacted whatever they want to enact relative to marijuana, where it's been legal in the state now for what, for recreational use for like, what, four years?
Yeah, at least a-
And we've had, and, 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 and we've had various flavors of bylaw come through over the same amount of time. If there's not a regulation in place today, shame on them.
And if you look at, I mean, not the rough topic, but if you look at the fines that have been levied against cultivators, none of them have to do with any of this, it's more ownership issues, things like that.
Yeah. I mean, I, I-
Because Brad does his homework so much better than the, than the two of us.
All right. I mean, as, as long as the locking in of the bylaws is scoped to conformance, uh, interpretation of the HCA, then I'm good because we own the HCA and I'm willing to say, if the rules change, I'm not going to say you're violating the HCA because a rule changed after we agreed it. I'm willing as, in the context purely of the HCA, to say, yep, we're entering into this in the context of the rules we have now, we're not gonna, we're not gonna change them. It's like, if, if state law changes, well, life happens.
That will affect my license. I don't have a contract with the state, this is just a contract with the business of Brookfield.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I'll make a motion to, uh, are you accepting motions?
I, I am always, I'm always accepting motions.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accepted with the discussed modification inclusive of the definition of, of, um, uh, independent expert.
Second. All right. I'm good, any further discussion? All right, well then, all in favor of Beth's motion to, um, to agree in principle to the, um, HCA-
No, it's not in principle.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you. All in favor of Beth's motion to approve the HCA with the discussed changes? Did you get that right?
With the discussed.
With the discussed changes, um, uh, to be, uh, it's like, please say aye.
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 Um, for just procedurally, uh, for the, for the, that one change regarding the agreement of the experts, how would you like that to be made?
Did you, did you have, did you have-
Do you use beautiful language?
Language, did we write down his language? Cause I'm writing-
We have the video.
This is common language in a contract, it's very, very common, Steve.
Yes, no, I have-
Just the way he said.
I have his language, but I guess what I'm asking is, uh, would you like me to send you, um, you know, uh, email you a document that has that language added? Do you want to do it yourself? I just wondered if you want me to do something.
What, it makes sense that since you're present, we know what all the changes are, that it would come from your office.
That's fine.
And then we'll, since we voted it here, we'll just roll by to do the signatures.
Yes, you just, yeah. Email that to the minutes, please, the changes.
I'm sorry, can you say that?
Email the, email the change to her specifically for the language.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, I think that takes care of the HCA.
If, if I can, if I can just give you copies of the, the proposed manufacturing HCA, which is the same but for the description of the license and everywhere, basically everywhere it said cultivation, I substituted the word manufacturing. And I think I, I think I removed the provision on, um, uh, use of pesticides, but, um-
If that document is based on what you've given to us, it almost thinks that, my, my thinking is that it may make sense to wait for the fi-, wait for the final signable version of the cultivation HCA and then go through and replace cultivation with manufacturing, make any, make the couple manufacturing related, uh, changes and then use that as the basis for discussion and we can treat this as preliminary.
Yeah, that, that's, no, I, I understand that you're not voting on this tonight.
Yeah.
The, the top two documents, so, I'm sorry, the top two documents are, um, redlined showing the changes between the cultivation and the manufacturing HCA.
Okay.
And then the bottom three documents, sorry, I don't have, I apologize, I don't have three of the redlines, but, um, the bottom three are the, a clean version of the proposed manufacturing.
Okay. You guys want the redlines?
Sure.
Right. And another redline?
No, 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 they, yeah, they, they signed the other. Oh, when did they actually sign it? So we, we do just have a procedural question, when, when will the, when would we actually get a, a signed copy of the cultivation HCA?
If you have it to Karen, today's Thursday night, can everybody roll by Monday to sign?
Mm-hmm.
So probably Monday by, well, shit, I'll be, I'll be out of town. I work out of town on Mondays, you could probably buy like Tuesday.
I can, I mean, I, I can, I have my computer with me, I could make the changes and email them right now and then when, as soon as you're able to sign it.
Actually, if you email it right now, we'll print it out.
Okay, I'll do that.
So, cause that's easier than trying to, that's easier than trying to catch us outside here.
And this con, we would wanna run that by town council?
It's a little late, we already voted to sign it.
Okay. But do we still, but we still have a chance?
He's gonna email it to me. Okay, but you got it to me and then I'll, I have to print it from in there.
Come here.
Oh, thank you so much.
Number, so are we done with agenda item number one, I believe?
I believe so.
All right, agenda item number two, replacement security camera server.
Ready?
No.
No, no, we did, we did three.
We jumped around, we did a lot of administrative stuff waiting for you.
I saw that, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that, but thank you for accommodating.
No worries.
Do we wanna do Mr. Taft now? Or Mr. Kellinger? Mr. Kellinger's go.
Okay. Oh yeah, we do, we do, we still-
You're not gonna do the security camera? I didn't know if you were still going out of order.
I was gonna try to get people out of here.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, good point, all right, so, all right, so I will, uh, so instead of number two, we will jump to, uh, agenda item number six, highway department staffing and personnel. So, Gary, come and join us for this conversation, since you are our interim superintendent.
Sure, thank you and good evening. So, uh, through the chair, if I may, combine, uh, number six and seven?
Um, I think the expectation was we were gonna pa-, why don't we talk about number six and then we can go to number seven?
Talk about six and that'll give context for seven, so.
Okay, cool, okay, for number six, uh, I know it's listed as strictly discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I sep-, I, I listed them separately to allow us to have a sort of broad ranging discussion and that would inform, uh, the specific point of num-, agenda item number seven.
Okay.
But I, it's like, I, I like to keep those separate, just to-
Okay. Well, the only, the only, um, up to date, if you will, discussion we could have about this is we currently know what the staffing levels are at the highway department.
Mm-hmm.
So right now we have one vacancy for a superintendent and one vacancy for an equivalent operator. Um, so my, so what I suggested is we, unless there's a discussion about a restructure, that we make an attempt to fill those both as soon as possible. So that's my, um, really my only comments about all positions. I don't know who, excuse me, who has applied for either. Um, I know it's been on, on the board, uh, with the board's mind certainly, certainly on Kelly's mind. Um, I, I feel that the department is, is moving smoothly, but there's a lot more we could accomplish if we had a full staff.
And I think the, the open operator position is technically what, an operator two, which is the foreman.
That's correct.
So I think that's where it gets confusing, right? So I think what needs to happen would be, if we're gonna add anybody to staff, what we need to do first is to hire the foreman, determine whether that hire is gonna be internal or external, if it's gonna be promotion of, so I think both of our existing operators have applied for the foreman position, right? So it would be a case of determining if one of them needs to get designated as foreman and then we would have to backfill posts for the operator level one. And if we chose to fill that with a part-time versus a full-time person, then that would be at the superintendent's discretion, right? With the understanding that, you know, if the person couldn't work the full number of hours, you're only gonna get what you get.
Mm-hmm.
So, have we, do we still have the foreman position posted and advertised?
Foreman position, it, no, we didn't advertise it because number Tom, you seem reluctant to that, we kept it, no, we kept it, we kept it advertised, it had been advertised.
It has been advertised.
Four times and, uh, seven papers twice and, and five papers twice, and each time it had a two-week run. Plus it was running on, I do not advertise, break this minute, that is not advertised.
Okay, but it's been advertised sufficiently that we could fill a position?
Yes, and also it's been online.
And how many, and how many applicants do we have?
Only the two.
So not a single person applied other than the, the two current operators?
Oh, for the, for the foreman. No, we only have the two, the two original ones that, that, um, that applied.
Wow.
There's a lot of towns that haven't posted out there.
Wow. Okay. So then the question comes down to a superintendent, right? Does the superintendent wanna fill that position as a, as an operator two or as, just have three level one operators and the superintendent's the only head honcho on there?
You're looking at, you're saying, does the superintendent wanna do something and I feel like you're looking at me?
Well, through you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
The superintendent, um, as you have him now, is certainly not pushing himself off the door.
Right.
I'm very happy with the interactions that we've had, um, of the observations that I've made as the season progresses and we hopefully went to, will be over after this weekend. Um, and I've met with many residents, I've seen many problems, I've seen things that we have to do, I'm happy to do that. Um, is it right for the town? I guess that's my question. If you have, uh, you've advertised for a working superintendent, I think we've discussed that. So with a working superintendent, um, and three full, full-time staffers as well as the administrative assistant, um, for the onset, for now, that is fine. Uh, but that's, I'm, I'm a hard timer, that's all I can be, it's not that I even wanna work full-time, but that's all I can do.
Right. So, well, and, cause, cause here's the problem, what we posted was the foreman position.
Right.
So the only thing we can fill right now will be the foreman position. And I think part of the discussion today is, would be if we, we, if we wanna fill the third slot with a, with an operator at the level one, right? One, I think, I, I'm gonna tell you first off, at the business where I work, we have internal applicants at a minimum, we should be interviewing them, okay? And if they're, and, and if, and if for whatever reason they aren't gonna get that position, we would owe them some explanation and a developmental conversation about why they will or won't get the position, okay? And then the next step would be to post for an operator, right? So either we fill the foreman position with one of the two gentlemen that's applying for it, or we do what we did with the superintendent, which is interviewed a couple people and said, nope, not doing either one, right? So, and if the answer after interviewing our operators is that no, neither one of them is ready for level two, right? Then we could empower the highway super- Then we could empower the highway superintendent to repost that position as a level one and take on whatever applicant, appropriate applicants that he has to fill that position as a non, as a non-forman position. But those are our choices, either we, either we inter- we, we interview the, the two gentlemen that have applied, Eric and Mike, determine if one of them ought to be a foreman. And in that situation, you're really evaluating them against the foreman job description and if they're ready to take it on, okay? And then post their position when it's vacated by them becoming foremen, in which case you've already got a live applicant for that role, right? And then we just would have to have it posted for the two weeks and do whatever's the appropriate thing relative to getting resumes and interviews and whatnot, okay? And then fill that slot as a backfill, or we determine we're not gonna refill the foreman position that was functionally created because we had somebody who was a very long-term person that, you know, because we don't do true, what is it, uh, grade?
Step and grade.
Since we don't do step and grade here, it was just asinine and the only way to, to do right by them was to create the foreman position. It's the only reason why that exists, only reason why that exists.
Yeah, it wasn't out of necessity.
It was not out of necessity, it was to do the right thing by a long-term employee. So, in which case, it, if, if we said, hey, neither one of these people was, is truly s- foreman material? Now granted, I'm sure either one of them or both of them will be angry if that happens and that creates its own host of challenges, okay? But those are our choices at this point.
Mm-hmm. And as we move forward on that, the question becomes, we, we also need to pay attention and, uh, and move forward the, uh, the search for a, a permanent superintendent.
There was one resume that came through for permanent superintendent. That I saw come through my email.
All right, and Kelly, for-
Thomas.
Our ability to, our, under what structure can we review and screen applicants, does, does, if that's up by the board, does it have to be an open meeting?
Because you are the hiring authority, the law specifically, what specificity excludes you from being a review team? For, um, that is, that is allowed in executive session for that purpose.
Okay.
So the screening committee, I mean, yeah, screening committee is what I, is the terminology I was looking for.
But we can vote one of our members to do screening.
You can do one member to do screening, um, another option is that you all look at the resumes and our applications and you bring forward your preferred choice to a meeting and then you review that choice without any communication obviously between you. You bring your preferred choices forward, if you agree on one or two or all of the preferred choices, right, you each bring one or two. Then you know who you're gonna interview.
Well, and bring numbers.
Or you can assign one of you to do that and then that person bring forward the suggestion.
And right now we're not inundating with resumes, but we have one.
Mm-hmm.
I'll volunteer to do, and Gary, it's not because we're not happy with you, don't get, get me wrong.
I think that you're, you're kinda concerned or maybe convinced that I've turned into a flaming pile of doo-doo.
Oh, Lord, no.
You said that, I heard you say.
Lord, no.
Brad said steam is not waiting.
Trust me.
Oh, steam.
So, so I'm gonna share with you a secret, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share with you a secret that unfortunately our last highway superintendent didn't figure out. If I thought you were a flaming pile of doo-doo, I would be down at that highway bar and probably twice a week.
Well, I would like to see you down there twice a week, but not, not for that regard.
I can do that, but then people will think I'm trying to fire you.
I'm not trying to fire you, I know I've been down there a few times.
Just, I'm just, I'm just interested, full disclosure, I am very, and it's really funny, my team at work, they, they say that I'm, I'm not the easiest person to work for with, but I am incredibly consistent, okay? So one consistent thing is that if I thought you were a flaming pile of doo-doo, you would know.
Steaming, steaming.
Steaming, steaming, that's a step below flaming.
I'm actually kind of, um, kind of excited about what I'm seeing as far as getting projects done. I, I met with, obviously with Lindsay and Kathy to reopen, um, the grant for, for Gaylord.
Okay.
Even though the initial proposal was not for the, I guess, I'm, I'm probably getting off topic on that.
Yes, you are, I'm sorry.
That's why I apologize, I'm steaming.
And a steam is getting to us.
It's, it's a steam getting to you.
Quite honestly and frankly, uh, what I've seen with the, with the crew, and I, I, I know that two people applied, I have not seen, uh, resumes or applications. Based on my-
Well, uh, yeah, I did, I sent the second one, well, the only two that really applied are the two, we don't talk about, well, no, I'm not gonna send, I was gonna send, is the one that keeps that, he's got it.
Oh, no, no, I'm talking-
No, he's talking about the foreman.
He's gonna talk about the foreman.
Oh, for the foreman, oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I've interacted, I've observed, I've worked with, um, all people, with the gentleman that did, um, did apply. And I'm, I'm pleased to understand that I'm not basing any decisions historically, because I wasn't here for what happened in the past, I wasn't here. I'm just telling you what I've seen and, and how we interact and the knowledge that both of them have regarding the function of highway department.
Yep.
But it, it, it's hard for me, knowing some of the historic facts, um, but I would still, I would have a recommendation for one of those gentlemen to take that position.
Okay.
I've seen, I've seen a change, and I know that's hard for everybody, I, I work with that every day, um, so. I've seen a change based on what I've heard, uh, I know that may be hard for, for people to comprehend, but this is, um, uh, what I've heard, I haven't seen.
Gosh, okay.
I'm just, just, just stating the facts. I know that's not, that's not the purpose of this, this discussion, I, I get it, but-
Well, it is somewhat the purpose of the discussion, because this purpose of the discussion is staffing and personnel discussion, right, which is like, what's the plan, right? And, and, and Kelly, if I remember correctly, you had, you had sent us a structure in an email, this is the one that I'm thinking of, where the structure is a foreman, basically two operators and the superintendent.
Uh, yeah, and the, and the admin.
And the admin.
Yes, that is, that is the current structure.
Right.
You as the executive board can change that.
Yeah, we, we can change it, but current structure isn't, it sounds like, it, it sounds like you feel that, that, that it's at least worth retaining that structure and that you, you have, you have somebody you would recommend for foreman.
Out of those that I've heard that have applied, yes.
Okay.
I don't know how many, actually I don't know how many times it's been posted, um, I know we don't have any externals nor do we have any other interns. So I don't know honestly, I mean, if we would be wasting our time to repost if we don't have that now.
Oh, I think, well, I think, I, I think if we have posted that many times and we don't have any other applicants and I think the question is, and I think one of the reasons why we held off was originally we were looking to try to bring in a permanent, with no disrespect, a permanent highway super, let, let him or her make the decision about what the structure would be.
That, that, that's, Kelly, I had the conversation with-
But, but, but right now, but right now, right now, your interim is fairly long-term, right?
His interim in other towns is also long-term.
And, uh, and so, so, you know, I, I'm thinking that, you know, do we, I, I mean, my thought is, is if that's where Gary stands today, we empower him to make a hire for the foreman position and then advertise the backfill for the operator, even though you've already got an applicant, we have to leave it posted two weeks to be compliant.
What operator if you do the foreman? There is no, oh, for the, oh, it's a, oh.
For the vacated operator.
If you vote, then it vacates a position and then you have to post the position.
The food, the, yeah.
But we can't just hire tomorrow.
Sugar deficiency.
Yeah, we can't, we can't just hire tomorrow, we have to post.
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess.
So now you're, 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 you're picking up what I'm laying.
I'm, I'm on board, yes, I guess, ma'am, thank you.
So my recommendation would be that we vote tonight to request that the highway superintendent make a d- determination regarding the hiring of the foreman. And that in the event, in the event that it is filled internally, that we authorize him to ad- post and advertise appropriately for a backfill of the operator selected for.
So are you authorizing him to actually hire the foreman or advise us to whether or not it should be a foreman? I didn't notice.
Historically speaking.
I, I know what the history is, I understand that the reason that the foreman was made, I'm just trying to clarify.
What I was saying is historically speaking, I think we'd let the highway super pretty much hire their team.
Okay.
I don't think we-
I, I just wasn't clear if you were saying advise us on what the makeup should be or you're saying if you feel you have something, you go ahead and hire someone.
I think the reality is, too, another form, if we end up hiring another superintendent, he doesn't like the guys that are working with him and they don't get along, he can come back and go, you get rid of him.
He can get rid, exactly, well, that's what I'm thinking, that, that's basically where I'm at, is, is let Gary make the choices that he feels are appropriate for his team.
Yeah.
Right? And if somebody comes in and doesn't agree with those choices, we sort it out then.
Yeah.
Well, I can also bet to your comment initially, um, I would have certainly no objection to you, to you, the board, interviewing both candidates.
Okay.
I would have no objection to that whatsoever. I mean, this is a, this is a joint effort to me, it's just, um, you know, this is, I, I want what's right for the town in Brookfield.
Yeah.
That's all. So was there a motion?
So the motion was to, I, my motion was actually to let, let Gary, um, select his, his pick zero or whomever for foreman and if he picks a foreman, to authorize him to go ahead and post for the backfill without coming back to us.
Mm-hmm.
And if he chooses not to pick a foreman, to communicate to both us and the individuals interviewed as to why they weren't selected for the operator two position and then authorize him again to post the, for the third position as an operator one.
Mm-hmm.
So his choice, basically he's empowered to fill the three slots, however he chooses to fill them, either by promoting one and advertising, either way he needs to advertise for an operator, because either he's gonna fill the foreman internally or he's gonna have three level one operators.
Right.
So, I'd like to vote to empower Gary to go ahead and structure his three headcount however he chooses to, to do it, as long as he fills it in a legal way that's compliant with all of our bylaws and state regulations.
And he has the budget, there's no budget question.
Yeah, there's no budget question, no.
The, the position's already budgeted.
Right, right.
If I may, um, to the chair, with that empowerment, could that empowerment include interviews? By me, based on what I see in writing?
That's, that's, that would, the way I just made that motion is basically you go fill your positions in whatever structure you'd even see fit, is basically what I just said.
Okay.
If you wanna show the version of that. And illegal and appropriate then.
Oh.
That we, yeah, that we, that, that, okay, all right, thank you, man, so for, for discussion, so we're, right now, the, the motion, the effect of the motion will be to empower Gary to, uh, conduct interviews and, I'm not rewording the motion, I'm making sure I understand it correctly, is that, uh, to, uh, to conduct interviews and to select the candidate, uh, for the foreman that he wants. And then upon selection of a candidate, he's then authorized to backfill the, an open operator one position and, uh, he is also authorized that should he decide that neither candidate is, is a good fit for the position.
Yep.
That, uh, then he is authorized to, um, to hire a third operator one to, uh, to bring the headcount up to scratch.
Yep.
You comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right, then I'm good, all right, any further discussion? All right, seeing as there's none, all in favor of Beth's motion to move this forward, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, for, um, now for the su- for the superintendent, we have one applicant?
Yep.
All right.
I don't-
Are we? What's that?
There were two, but one took a job somewhere else.
Okay, so one, one has taken, that, one has gone elsewhere.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we, we have one, we have one active candidate.
It was sent to me, I sent it to you.
What day is this?
All right, then-
It would've been Monday or Tuesday, it was, it was earlier this week.
Okay, so it was the one that I saw, is the one that's still available?
Yes.
Okay.
Then what I would propose is that the, and Kelly, please check me for legality and appropriateness, is that the board, the members of the board evaluate that resume individually and at our next meeting, we will, um, we will decide whether we want to inter- bring them in for an interview or not.
I'd like permission to phone screen.
You want me to, you wanna move that forward and you wanna go-
I'll make a motion and I get to phone screen the applicant.
I don't know.
Second?
Second.
All right, um-
Brad, you understand what she's saying?
Yeah.
By phone screen, cause you just looked-
Well, I was caught off guard.
So, so you wanna move this forward, Beth?
I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go rogue, so I'm asking for permission to call the person and phone screen them.
All right, that will move things forward faster and two thumbs up with that.
Okay.
All in favor of Beth phone screening the, uh, the current applicant, please say aye.
Right.
Aye.
And then, Beth, let us know what we will need to put on a future agenda.
I can do that.
And then if, if there's not an interview in our future, please let me know, because I, I may want to come back to the discussion, I may think, I have some ideas about structures, since we don't seem to have a lot of applicants, and can we take some, some, can we try and do things a little differently and see if we can, uh, make it a more attractive position? But if we can get someone in as it is now, then that works too.
Yep, okay.
All right.
I understand what you're saying, it's functionally what you're saying is that we're struggling to find a working super.
Yes, and so, what, what can, what can, is, is that something, how critical is, it's like, can we? Is there a different way to skin this cat?
Yep.
All right, uh, Gary, from a personnel standpoint, what help can we give you? I mean, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that the, the, uh, the vote today is gonna let you move things forward and, uh, and get things done, which is probably something that you've been waiting on us for. Is there any, it, what else can we do to help you and the highway department serve the town? And if you wanna think about it and send us a message, just let us know. And I think Brad's down there on a regular basis.
Do you want all new equipment?
Hey, I tell my kids, it doesn't matter to ask, the answer's no, but you can ask.
I was gonna say that, because, um, actually, I, I met with advisory, dispatch, dispatch, and, and, and looking at the, um, capital, because we no longer have CFC committee, correct?
I have an active capital, uh, planning committee.
But there was two, one purchase was scheduled to be made on FY twenty-four, um, which is not, was not even put forth as an article one on FY twenty-five. Both of those things would be, uh, would come in very handy, um, certainly help us perform better. We have a lot of time coming up in the spring, when the season is over, that we have to put into our equipment. We've got a, a major brake job that we have to get done, we've gotta, um, we've gotta rip apart an, um, oil pan underneath and, and, and change all the guts. So there's a lot of things to do, um, the, the fleet is aging, I, I'll give you that, but, um, I, I operate one of the oldest pieces, I'm very happy with it, other than sliding into a telephone pole. That was because of the equipment, that was because, just because of the-
Those are conditions, yes.
But I'm, I'm very happy with how, how they kept that equipment up, so, um, it runs, it's-
You don't want the new stuff, it all breaks.
It's actually incredibly impressive, the amount of money we save, that, that we save the town and the amount of care we put into that equipment is unbelievably impressive.
It's unmentioned, almost, well, it's mentionable, so thank you.
It's unbelievably impressive.
Yeah, because last time, um, I was involved with the, actually even the labor cost of having somebody repair a heavy was two hundred eighty-seven dollars an hour.
Yeah.
And that's not even including parts, um, so, and we virtually, they, I won't say we, because I was there at the time, rebuilt the guts of the backhoe. I, I say rebuilt, but not to, up the, up the snuff, um, because it's band-aided, but it runs, it operates a year round, this is equipment, so it works. The heavy trucks that were used for plowing, I, I have not complained about any of them. I'm very impressed from where, from what I've seen, from where I came from, of what these guys do, the small stuff that you have and, and their, their, uh, ability to repair. So. I guess alls I can ask of the board, you ask what you can do, is I, I guess all I can ask is for continued support, because we're really trying to get stuff done and move forward and, and there's a lot to do. And I'm not knocking anybody in the past or the crew, the size, the people, um, there's a lot to do.
Yes, there's, you know, I have noticed more potholes this year and I don't know if that's just, I don't know if I'm just more tuned to it now than I'm on select board.
No, the roads are just gonna start falling apart really fast now.
Do you wear your glasses?
Which isn't there for a-
What's that?
Do you wear your glasses when you drive down the road?
Heck, no.
That's why. We put an extraordinary amount of money into, into coal patch, extraordinary, especially on one road in particular, which we don't have to talk about. It's almost a constant.
Yes, I'd be very happy to talk about that road.
Yeah, I've met with residents, I've been up close and personal with them and gave them recommendations, suggestions how to repair their issues. They seem very receptive, so, in fact, one of them told me that, that their project would be done by this weekend, so I have been checking on that. I, I met with Al today, um, just to see the exact bounds on a GIS.
I apologize, but sorry, I actually wanna hear this stuff, but we can't do it tonight. Can, can we, can we actually have?
We have thirty minutes of time left.
Yeah, we have thirty minutes of time left to get through like nine items on the agenda, so I, I apologize, but what I, but what I'd like to do, can, can we get on a future agenda? Of, of recommended road plan, like what the next, like, three to five projects are that, that Gary thinks we need to get in order to try to. I know we're not gonna get ahead, but maybe get caught up a little bit.
I like that, him and I have talked about that.
Yeah. That's, that's what I would, that's what I would love to hear about, honestly.
Okay, gotcha, yeah. And then, yep, so that would either be four four, four eighteen, we'll see what the agenda looks like. And then if there's any equipment you need or the repair and replace account needs topping up, it's, it's that time of year, let us know so we can discuss getting it on the warrant.
Okay, all right, then we, because we had a discussion about personnel, there's no need to talk about themselves.
Right.
Exactly.
I've had the discussion with Kelly, um, and I've had the conversation with the person, um, so we're good.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. So, um, I will, so that takes care of agenda item number six, and then I'll take a motion that we pass over, number seven.
Uh, motion to pass over, number seven?
Second.
All right, all in favor of passing over number seven, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right, and let's see.
You wanna get your other guests?
I was just thinking that, Don Taft. Uh, let's see, agenda item number ten, warrant article request regarding the old roller rink.
You might wanna roll eleven into that as well.
Right.
Yeah, we'll just, yeah, we'll just go straight to eleven after this.
Since you're on time crunch, I will be quick.
We've discussed this before.
The, we, we have discussed this before, I came before the board, uh, several months ago to make the board aware of it. It's dilapidated, it's falling down, I did take some pictures, I don't know if you care to look at them. We would have, but it's town-owned property, it's a liability, it needs to be taken down and cleaned up. That's the request for the.
And?
Now, I put a dollar value in there, I did not get estimates for that, I kind of based it on what it costs, uh, in reference to cleaning up other buildings on the campground.
Mm-hmm. I would, uh, I guess I would say, if, if we're gonna do this, I would ask that you, um, can, can you, can you do a little more work on the estimate? And help us get the right amount on the warrant article, 'cause I wouldn't wanna put, say, six thousand dollars in and find out it's a ten thousand dollar project.
I think we can put the warrant art, we can vote tonight, put that article out without an amount.
To be determined.
Yeah, but, yeah, but in, in, in time for, in, but I wanted done, especially ahead of town meeting, that if it's, that we understand its impact on the free cash. And if it's going to grow enough that it eats through our buffer, then we, we realize, okay, we're either gonna have to do this, or if we do this, we're gonna have to kick something else off, our, our recommended list.
Understood.
So.
Yep, I can do that.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, so I'll take a motion to, uh, to consider, to add that to the warrant for now.
Make a motion to, uh, place that on the warrant as an article.
All right, all right, thank you. All in favor of placing, um, the demolition of the old roller rink at thirty-six Pine Lane, uh, onto the, uh, warrant, please say aye.
All right.
Aye. Beth?
Yes, she said.
I didn't hear you, sorry, thank you. All right, and I, number eleven, the survey markers for high water level.
So, um, again, I brought this before the board, uh, actually, that's kind of in limbo at the moment. And that's only because we're waiting for the state fish and wildlife to approve our high water bylaw.
I CC'd you on my last correspondence, you had the entire key.
I did. I did, I saw, I saw that, thank you.
And we can just vote on it and pass over it if it's.
Well, well, I guess my point is, is that the, we're, we can't put it, we can't put it in.
You could, you could put it on the warrant.
We can't put the marker in until they approve the bylaw, right?
That's not true, you can put the marker in, just in, and you just don't have a bylaw to enforce what that, what it is.
Right.
But you can have it in place.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And I do, I did get a.
And, and when you have good neighbor boaters, if you have it in place and you educate them.
They're gonna react to it anyways.
A lot of the, a lot of people will actually react to it appropriately. Now, there's always that person.
Which there probably still will be afterwards.
But it's matter of whether you have a bylaw or not, you're still gonna have that person.
Right, it's, it's like, it won't stop everyone, but the sign will encourage more people to realize they shouldn't do it.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, my thought is, if the, if the state approval of the bylaw blocked us from, it's like enforcing it, we could still put it in.
Well, they wanna enforce it, but that's, that's kind of the holdup.
Right, but we can, but we can place the sign.
Absolutely.
And then, and then when they get around to.
With the exception of the fact that it's their boat ramp, and we would be marking their boat ramp.
Well, we would, yes, this would, uh, the approval would have to note that it would be done in coordination with the state. And, 'cause if we put it in, they don't like it, they'll just rip it out, and that's a waste of money.
Okay.
All right, but that, for, for me, for the amount of, uh, property damage that this could, uh, prevent, uh, when it's at high water, it's like, it's, it seems like fairly short money to, to protect.
And I did get an estimate for surveying was about a thousand dollars for, to have a local surveyor survey it.
Both locations or each location?
Both, both locations.
So you're envisioning a thou- a thousand dollars for surveying and then about five hundred dollars to get per sign installed?
Yeah, I, basically, what I'm thinking is a, is a six-foot wide yellow stripe across the boat ramp that says, uh, flood zone, no wake. End of story.
Okay, so it's, that's gonna weather a bit and it will, it might have to be repainted in a few years.
Every five years.
That's fine. I mean, once it's surveyed, repainting and line's already painted, you don't need the surveyor to know where to paint.
Correct, 'cause I would put a PK nail or a rebar or something at that point, and it would last forever.
Mm-hmm. All right, anyone else have questions about this? All right, seeing as none, I'll take a motion.
Motion that we approve this for inclusion in the warrant art, in the warrant.
Second.
All right, all in favor of including this in the warrant, please say aye.
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 And we're good.
Thank you.
All right, and let's see, and while we are working on this, uh, we, uh, we'll bring Mr. Fromm up. Mr. Fromm, you had a, a bylaw request also.
I've got other things still on there.
We've got, we've got other things, but since you're here, we might as well free you up and.
Yeah, we'll keep it brief. Uh, someone knowledgeable tells me that that probably won't work. Same person told me that, uh, the governor's thinking of eliminating boards of health, so it's kind of along the same avenue. It takes a few years to do that though, so it starts with a warrant article two, and then another year, and then you have a election, a vote. And it could take two to three years to eliminate a board of health, but I put, I put to you, uh, that that's probably something we should do. We can always change our mind later, but you have to wait a year.
Mr. Fromm, the, uh, the, the change here, it has nothing to do with the board of health, so could we get on the topic that you asked?
Right. Exactly. I'm gonna, I'm just gonna tell you that, you know, make of it what you will, uh, it's probably not gonna be a legal thing, that you probably don't have the authority. We don't have the authority, is what I'm understanding.
You're, you're saying that this bylaw won't fly past the attorney general?
I don't think so.
Okay, that, that was one of my concerns, but I, I, I thought I'd, I, I said, I've, I've had other people up here, so I thought I owed you the chance to talk this question.
I appreciate that, and I think it's worth discussing very, very briefly that, uh, certain things affect people's lives in a very big way. And I feel very strongly that we should have the right to vote on bylaws and, and regulations that affect people to that extent. Not the day-to-day administrative things that boards decide, but if we have, uh, a board or even this board decided to make a sweeping bylaw that's gonna change the way people live. I don't feel that two or three people should have the authority to do it, it should go to town meeting, the following town meeting for ratification before it becomes effective. That was the point of that attempt.
Kelly, check me on this, a, a bylaw is something that has to be approved by town meeting, whereas.
Correct.
Boards can, can establish regulations and procedures.
Yes.
Okay, so, so to, to, so, so I would say that, um, just for clarification, yeah, so it's like, so whenever you said a board passed a bylaw, should be read as board passed a regulation.
I misspoke.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I know, not, not everyone hears this steeped in this whole, especially those who are at the home, at the home audience. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that people there at home weren't saying, but they can't, board of health can't pass a bylaw, it's like, yes, we understand.
You got it.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna excuse myself.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, and. All right, so that, so agenda, let's go to number two, security camera server, I think.
I thought we had already, I thought the security camera server, I thought we had already voted to go to the, uh, advisory and ask for reserve funds two meetings ago.
Let's see, I don't, I thought we didn't have the, I thought we did, I thought we needed, I thought we had to do that base, I thought we needed a proposal to request, to firmly, to request a specific amount. Did I miss, did I mess up on, on procedure?
We, at the last meeting that this was discussed, you voted to go to seek the reserve fund money to get the server. Tom said he was going to bring forward a quote, that there was a quote out there, but he was going to check Jacob.
That's on there.
That's, yes, that's, um, and so here we are, and there's Tom, and there's Jacob. There's Jacob.
I just can't.
So, we had, I know that you had discussed with, uh, Jacob, or Mr. Gorman, excuse me, had discussed with Mr. Gorman. Just putting in a server that would allow us to utilize our hard cameras until we can fund and operate the cameras after town meeting. If we would be able to do it now, if you use the reserve fund.
Mm-hmm, and I believe the amount is, um.
Thirty-six eighty-five, something like that. I do not know.
I don't know, I was looking for the, um, I don't know.
Do you have a soft copy of it?
I have one, hold on a minute.
Thank you. Just for the record, Jacob was not aware of the agenda this evening? Okay, so.
Uh, okay, yeah, so I can, you want me to come up and say it?
No, or send it to Karen, please. And this would allow us to comply with the storage.
Yes.
And it would no longer be impossible to get data off of it, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I don't think he's gonna make his job more difficult than it is.
He went to the trouble of building a player so that we can actually leave the file as they exist.
That was fun.
That's impressive.
Thank you.
What language did you do it in?
JavaScript.
Did you really do the job? Yeah, I was wondering.
I'm, I'm a big, uh, front-end guy, and now I'm using back-end work, and it's, uh, it's cool that you can do everything, full stack in JavaScript.
Yeah. I'm not actually competent, but. Yeah, yeah, it's two, the, the new recording server and support for twelve channels, possibly for adding more cameras in the future. Three thousand seven hundred and fifty and a thousand dollars configuration, installation and wiring.
So the hardware's three seven fifteen, installation is a thousand, because the outside is a contract, that's all they need, they don't care about the cameras. That's related, that's related.
This is just the town hall, or does that also have?
Well, so the intent with the, with the warrant article, or with the tech budget, was to replace the cameras in the systems in all locations.
What does the fire department have?
I'm not aware that they have.
But that would be their own budget anyways, nevermind.
Yes, do the existing cameras support audio or are they video?
They do not.
Okay.
They barely support video, have you seen the photos? Have you seen the footage?
I have not, and my.
So how much was the camera update? Was that in there too?
It was, yeah, it's eighty-five hundred.
Is it?
I have, oh, no, I'm sorry.
Thirty-six hundred and fifteen hundred installation. Thirty-six hundred.
Eight new cameras for thirty-six, thirty-six, not thirty-six a piece, thirty-six a total, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so thirty-six hundred for eight new cameras, but it will support twelve channels.
Right, but, so, I, I mean, I guess the question, the, the reason why I'm asking that question is, I don't think we spent a penny of the reserve fund yet. We haven't, however, in order to access the reserve fund, it must be extraordinary and unforeseen.
Yes.
If this works, it doesn't qualify, the server does. Oh, I see, got it, okay, 'cause it, 'cause, just because they're so bad, I figured they might almost qualify, but not quite. Well, if you're changing language, they'd be replacing the system. Right. But, um. But you feel it's more appropriate? I feel that it is more appropriate to, to just do the one, uh, in your phone. I'll make a motion that we, again, that we request the four thou- four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars from the reserve fund. And authorize the replacement of the server at its earliest convenience.
Second.
All right, all in favor of requesting the, uh, release of reserve funds for the, for this project, please say aye.
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 Aye. All right, let's see, all right, I will get that, I will get that signed and into the advisory box tonight before I leave.
Do you have the form, the blank form?
No, I do not, but I was gonna, I was gonna ask Karen to get me the blank form.
Karen, you have the blank form?
I might.
The one that made this for Brookfield?
And Kelly, I might have an old copy floating around somewhere that I could, um, zero out.
Yeah, you're actually good, yeah.
Since I was on advisory two years ago, when you were first here. All right, and so, all right, good. So that's, that's what we need, that is done, that is approved, so, let's see. So we have, uh, elementary school roof, grant writer, and minutes. All right, elementary school roof. Um, at our last meeting, we had, uh, discussed, um, approaching the school about, uh, a, a working group or committee to, uh, look at the roof. Uh, they were very interested in that, I've already received, um, um, the, the facilities contacts from the school to discuss this. So, um, the way we discussed it was that it would be, the way I proposed it to them was that it would be an odd number of people, someone from the select board, someone from the school committee. And then after that, it was kind of vague, I don't know if we want, if it makes sense to include the two facilities people in it, or they would simply be advisory, uh, or consultative. And we should also, we will also wanna think of who would we want to round this out to three or five people. My thought is, I don't think it needs more than five people, and I think it could work with three plus the two consultative and, um.
What would the charge be?
Um, there, uh, the charge here would be to, um, explore and, um, it would be to provide recommendations, um, based on technical detail and price of options to alleviate, um, uh, roof deficiencies at the elementary school. Something like that is what I have in mind, is charging them, I, I would like the charge to allow them to go full-on, they could recommend replacing the entire roof if they could justify it. Anywhere from spot repairs to a, a new roof, if that's, if it's really like a hundred thousand dollars more than replacing half of it.
I would kinda say to my opinion.
I mean, but it's like, it just seems like we, we, I think a focused group between the school and this office would help move that forward.
Can you repeat your opinion, 'cause I don't remember it?
My, my opinion is, it's a twenty-five-year roof for a year thirty.
We need to just replace it.
Just replace the stupid thing.
Yeah, so, and, and the challenge is, right, is, and it looks like the two quotes that they have, is that one is for replacement of a limited area. And the other one is, looks like it's for either replacement or restoration of, is thirty-three thousand square feet the full roof?
No, it's only, it's only this section here, and the problem issues are here and here with the water that comes down.
Okay, so fundamentally, it's the, these two valleys here, and that's why the balustrade EPM.
Right.
Is only eight thousand square feet, 'cause they'd only be replacing these bits here, versus the other would be the, the full.
Right.
The full, I guess, when I said full roof, I misspoke in that we're talking the full forward building roof, inclusive of those problems.
And I think it, in one, in one of these pages here, they actually have it highlighted.
Yep, yep, there you go.
Why is one guaranteed for twenty-five million, guaranteed for?
Different materials. That's, those, those guarantees are always based off of the material, so one of them is.
Well, but why do they, the server's with twenty here, and then when they have the, it's a little thirty, why would, why would you take?
It's just the materials, so why they, so, so fundamentally, the one with the. It's just the materials, so why they, so, so fundamentally, the one with the...
Maybe there's a different report that shows that part of the roof.
I'm not sure you can do that wider area with the material that you're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, it says one to six and twelve, and they're twelve ages here, so.
Yeah.
So they're not missing, but there is another report that shows.
Yeah, you're, with the yellow, yeah, yeah, that's the one I was looking for. And it basically had outlined that front, front end section.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, if it were my house, I would not want to throw good money after bad money.
Right. So you're looking to do, what do you think that the committee is gonna?
I, I think they're, I think they're going to, I mean, this, this report gives us a couple of options. I think it's, it's recommending a saying, this is the course of action we should take to best protect that building from moisture.
But they don't even know how bad it's gonna be until they get in the...
Yeah, they don't know how bad it's gonna be until they, until they start taking it apart. That's why they've got the shiny bright yellow disclaimer there. I don't know why anyone, you know, you see schools all across the...
It's the main, that's why they have the flat roofs.
Well, combination of flat roofs and all those complicated geometries that are on some of these roofs. Cause every time you have a valley, you have an opportunity for a leak.
Right.
I mean, that's just like, you would be one on one.
Should be just a square roof.
Put a little swale on it.
No.
Okay, well, I don't want to hold this up, so fundamentally... The schools asked to us is just that this go on leave.
No, they have not asked for any warrant article. They have responded.
I think, I think part of the intention was that this would goose things forward in order to move the project forward.
Okay, so, so what are you looking for? Are you looking for a proposal for a, a school roof committee?
I, I am looking for, I'm looking for a motion to establish a committee to review the situation and make recommendations for the, um...
Yes, school.
Best present, yeah.
Okay, so you want a school roof committee of seven people or five?
I was thinking, um, I was thinking three to five, we could include the, uh, we could do five including the two facilities representatives. Uh, select board, school board, two facilities representatives and someone else.
And a, and an ad hoc member?
Yes.
So, uh, I'll make the motion to constitute a, a school roof committee, um, with the membership as described by the chair.
Second.
All in favor of appointing that committee, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye. And do we have enough detail on the charge of that committee?
Um, you're saying that it, let me see, wait a minute. Charge is that it can provide recommendations on technical detail and price for options to relieve the roof deficiencies at the elementary school.
That's a pretty good charge.
All right, yeah, I, I think it's pretty clear what we want done.
Do we, I think the only thing is, do you want a time certain? Do you want them to bring something forward by some period of time?
I don't know, part of, part of me says that it's like, it's, we're too close to the, this town meeting for that group to finish, though we could get lucky, in which case then, there's not a lot of time pressure.
Why don't we say within ninety days of appointment? Cause we don't have a committee yet, we just have a charge.
Sounds good.
Okay.
It's like, if they need more, they can ask for more, and we can extend it if we feel the need. And then the thought is that the, we would ask the school board who they want, who they want on there. We decide who from us would be on there, and then we decide who the, the add-on person is.
Yeah.
Have you spoken to the school committee or the facilities managers to see if they are willing to be on this page?
I have spoken to Deb Boyd, the superintendent, and Megan on the school board, and they were both, um, they were both positive to this idea. And, um, and Deb sent me the names, Deb sent me the names of the facilities people. So yes, I, I did loop them in before I decided they should be on this committee.
They were voluntold.
They were voluntold, I like that. I'm gonna use that when they're in kids. You've been voluntold, we're hunting dinosaur eggs, go pick the rocks out of the garden.
Three minutes.
All right, so that's, all right, I don't know if we're gonna make it, but, all right, so, any other, so I think we've done what we need to do on the roof? Good, all right, grant writer replacement, um, with Kathy has, we've already discussed Kathy's resignation. Two things, do we need any authorization to post the position? Or can that just?
No.
Okay, good, I'm just checking, and then as in-
I'm sorry, I don't mean to sound like that. It just comes out like that because I'm just surprised sometimes.
Okay, no, and, and it's like, I-
I'm just surprised by the question.
All right, no, that's fine, have we, have we posted it?
I have put it up on the, uh, town website, it has not been advertised in the paper.
Okay.
Make a motion to advertise it in the paper.
Second.
All right, all in favor of advertising this position in the paper per town bylaw, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Would it also make sense to advertise this through the municipal association, since I think a lot of the, Kelly, is this, would this be?
I have never seen a request for a grant writer through the M N A.
Then we won't do it, we will not go first. That's fine, now, as a, as an interim matter, Kathy's last day is in April, and I don't know that we will have it filled, we will have the position filled by then. So, I am thinking that we would, that we would want to identify someone to take on these responsibilities in, on an interim basis. Cause if we don't manage these, if we don't administer and manage these grants, then we're gonna have to send the money back, and we're gonna have trouble getting more grants. So, I want to be-
Do we have a recording of what she's actively managing today?
And Lindsay is also working with her currently to get up to speed.
She's trying to, um, help Lindsay get up to speed to be able to take this and run with it in the interim.
And my conversations with-
She's working on, on a list, I'm sorry, she's working on a list.
My, my understanding also is that Kathy's attempting to close out several projects or get them to good resting points where they're at a good stable point and suitable to hand off, rather than handing off something that, where it's half-cooked.
Roger.
It's like, but that brings me to the point of, of identifying someone to take this on, and if Kathy, and since Kathy has been working with Lindsay, I think that it would make, it would make sense, I, Lindsay has, I have asked Lindsay if she would be interested in this, and she has said yes. So, from a, from a legal standpoint, is this, could we, what could we do here to make sure the, that the position is, that the duties are executed by someone in the town?
So you could make a motion presently to appoint Lindsay as interim grant manager and grant writer, cause the position's very-
Cause her job duties are not covered.
Correct, until the position is filled, um, at the same rate that you're paying Kathy.
Okay.
Or A rate.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because you don't just give somebody the job and not the sector.
Yeah, it's actually, I, I like that, so, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lindsay Rockwood?
Rockwood.
Rockwood. I put Rockwood in the emails for like, the first three months.
Yeah, as, as interim grant writer, um, and that work executed shall be at the rate currently allocated for Kathy.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All right, all in favor of appointing Lindsay Rockwood as interim grant writer to be effective on the date of Kathy's resignation? Uh, and, or, I'm sorry, with the understanding that it will become effective on the date of Kathy's resignation.
Second, I mean-
Please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, and then, and Kathy has indicated to me that she will be available to assist, um, as, as available, um, if Lindsay has questions to assist with the transition, uh, or, I'm sorry, not the transition, to assist with the interim period. And I suspect Lindsay may want to apply for the permanent position, and if so, we'll evaluate her with all the other candidates.
All right.
And, what a pass, you wanna give me, you wanna give, or do you just wanna try, cause I think that-
All right, I'll give you a motion to continue this meeting.
For fifteen minutes.
Yeah. All right, second?
Second.
All right, all right, all in favor of continuing the meeting past our two-hour time limit, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Um, according to my notes, the only things left are fifteen and seventeen, and we're passing over fifteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, oh, you're right, I, I had a, I had a check off next to it, I apologize, Brad, I checked it off by accident.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
All right, so, agenda item thirteen, select board agenda setting.
So, it would be nice to be prepared if we could have, and I don't know what the rules are with this, like, a shared Google Doc or Excel Doc of just what the agenda items are coming up.
That's one of the ideas, so you can see live, so you know when it's updated.
I had the, I had the same idea, I was, my intention was to explore that with, um... To explore that idea, and just have a document, and we'd have like, here's what we're proposing, here's what we're considering for the next meeting, in this case it'd be four-four, and here are agenda ideas that aren't going into the next meeting, but are things that we might want to talk about at some point with, with target dates.
So we can keep a pipeline.
With a bullpen, so to speak.
Right.
Um, I, I am, I am fine with that.
That doesn't violate over-meeting laws or any discussion.
You can, you can actually discuss agenda, the agenda, and not violate the over-meeting. So, example, I think the town should buy Kelly a puppy. Okay, that's an agenda item, Kelly gets a puppy on the agenda. The reason Kelly gets a puppy is because violation, you can't say that part.
That's discussion.
Um, and another thing along that line.
You realize when you leave, you're getting a dog shaped cake.
I want a puppy.
So along those same lines, another kind of request, and I don't know if it's allowed. So sometimes, things like, for instance, this evening, even this, I don't see this until I get here.
It's usually...
Like, a lot of the documents that it says in your packet, we don't get until we get here, and it'd be nice to review them ahead of time.
So as things are added to the agenda, there's a couple of options.
Yeah.
As things are added to the agenda, those proposed documents can be post, can be listed in or available in a shared file.
Okay.
As they're pulled, there's no reason for them to be there, though, so if the agenda shifts, there's no reason for them to be there. The other option is to attempt to set the agenda sooner and not change it.
Right.
Right, because this thing is a living, breathing document, and it's changed literally up to the minute of posting, which is one of them is being posted, to push it to the forty-eight hour mark as opposed to the week before, because you post it, then you change it, then you repost it, then you change it, then you repost it, then you change it, then you repost it, which is what was happening in the past. So, you can set a rule for your board that the agenda will be finalized as of this date other than for emergencies. That'll give you a few days to review the documents, that's one way of doing it. The other way of doing it is uploading it into a shared file, so that you can review the documents, knowing that if the item is pulled, it's, you, there was no reason for you to read it this week.
I don't, and I don't care about that, I just want to be better prepared.
So, yeah, there, there are definitely ways to do this.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would like to get the agenda posted.
And again, no commentary, no discussion, this is just for reviewing.
Except right now, cause it's on the meeting table.
Right, but again, the agenda items, you can, you can actually-
Yeah, we, we can say, I wish to discuss this in the meeting.
Well, if I have a question about something like, you know, for instance, uh, whatever I was just looking at with Jacob, I could reach out to Jacob ahead of the meeting.
Right, right, say, hey, what's this?
Yeah, right.
One, one thing, one thing we could do is we could try and create a little, something in OneDrive with Microsoft, and just have all the attachments and documents specific to the agenda in a folder, so that people can grab it. It's like, so, we'll have to, we can work that out, I mean, I would like, I would like to get the agenda done earlier. I was hoping to, I stopped by last Thursday and thought I would talk to Karen, but she had a dentist appointment, and so I missed her. And then we started talking about the agenda on Monday, and there was a lot of back and forth about it this time around, it was very busy. So, yeah, I, I under, so, yes, I, I-
So, what do you want to do, so that we know what to do going forward? You want to do the OneDrive, the shared OneDrive, or, and then Karen can put the template for the agenda as it appears right now, and as it's edited, you'll see it real time?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think we should have a, uh...
You don't actually have a motion for that?
A shared, a share, a, a document we can all view that will have the proposed gen, the, the projected agenda items for the next meeting, along with a separate area for bullpen, for things that we're not, that we're thinking about discussing. And then we can create a OneDrive folder with date-specific, um, we can create a OneDrive area, and then folders for, here are the documents for the, um, three-twenty-one meeting, here are the documents for the four-four meeting, here are the documents for the four-eighteen meeting, yada, yada, yada.
Can you have a column?
Yeah, and then-
Keep, keep, push on, push on, move out, if it needs more detail first, that kind of thing.
And my, my goal would be to get the agenda posted publicly earlier, and then we would try and make one change Tuesday afternoon to account for any adjustments, but the thought being that maybe get-
You would post it Monday, or you would post it on Thursday?
We'd post it Thursday and then do an update on Tuesday.
So, that being the fact, the agenda would be posted for the next meeting for this month.
I drank all that water, so.
Which is actually, next month, would be next Thursday, correct?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that's-
Yes, it, there may be an adjustment period where it first gets posted Monday morning, and then, and just on Tuesday, and then as we get our legs under ourselves, we can push it back to Thursday?
How quickly can we set that up, Jim?
This weekend?
Okay, super.
I already, I already created a, a Word doc that could be sit, for the agenda that could be shared. That's pretty easy, actually, it might just be good to keep that, for that to live in the OneDrive agenda area.
Yes.
So all the agenda stuff is in one place.
Does this need to be internal only, or is it?
Yes.
Yes. All right?
All right.
And then you need to pass over fifteen?
Yeah, so, okay, so I think that closes out thirteen. Fifteen, um, I will take a motion to pass over that, cause we don't have anything to vote on?
No, we'll just pass over fifteen, we've got nothing to vote on, we don't have to say that.
Right, we don't have to vote on it, don't-
All right, no, it's just, we don't have to vote to pass it over, we just agree to pass it over?
Yep.
All right, fifteens-
I made a motion to approve the minutes from two-one-twenty-four and two-twenty-nine-twenty-four.
All right, let's give, let's just wait a moment for Brad to come back before we approve the minutes, just in case he has anything. Karen, do the, do the minutes, did you send my?
Yes, but I-
directions to the, to the rest of the board?
No, she can't send her directions to him.
No, okay, all right, then, then-
Oh, corrections!
Corrections, yes.
Because it was, it, it was minor, it was just changing the spelling.
Okay, yeah, well, no, no, I mean, well, one was a spelling error, the other one, the other one was a clarification, so, okay, so, I'll wait for Brad to come back before I, so that he, he can participate in the discussion. Hey Brad, we were talking about minutes?
Yeah.
And I had one thing in the minutes for February first that I wanted added. Specifically, there is, there was a section where it talked about Kermit Eaton talking about the, uh, the work of the Council on Agent, and I distinctly remember at that point asking him to restrict his comments to the senior center building report.
Correct.
And I would, I would like the, the minutes to reflect that.
Okay.
And so, I, and so I would, I will take a mo, a motion to approve the minutes for two-one as amended as I described.
Some of them.
Second.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes for two-one as amended as described, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and, uh, let's see, and then I'll take a motion for two-twenty-nine, I, I figure a spelling, a spelling error doesn't require our approval to change.
I made a motion to approve the, just like four minutes for two-twenty-nine.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, thank you. Karen?
Motion to adjourn.
Karen?
Second.
It's R E G A N.
I know, that was correct.
All right, um, motion to adjourn at eight-twenty-five, all in favor, please say aye? Aye.
All right.
Thank you, everybody.